Holy and gracious God, since you are everywhere, it's good to be here. We thank you for yet another evening that brings key people in our community in their leadership together to make decisions for the benefit of the city that we all benefit from. And we thank you for that. Please guide the decisions and discussions tonight. And in a pending election next Tuesday, we thank you for any area that has things that need to be addressed, people to be voted on. Please help there to be guiding wisdom. So we thank you for the rains of these days and for how that prepares us for our next season. But we thank you, even though the leaves have waned, for the good memories of the brilliant colors that you gave us once again. So in all that is done and said tonight, to you be the glory, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much. Will go ahead and recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting. Appreciate you guys coming. You'll go ahead and move on to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion from Mary, second from Roy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. It brings us to approve the consent calendar, which are the minutes of the October fourteenth meeting and the payment of bills.
So moved. Second.
Motion, uh, Roy, second. Mary. Any discussion? Right now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, we'll move on to the next item, which is to, uh, community concern for the youth update. Haley View.
Alright, so just a quick update on the community concern for youth program. We usually do statistics from a year standpoint, so I'll go over twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five of, um, kids that we've had on in Staples. And then I do want to note that you guys did approve that in my resolution in August, so thank you for that. So we had twenty-two new cases opened, um, in Staples. That's in this Staples Public School, um, as well as the Staples ALC. We closed out a total of twenty-five kids, um, with twenty-three of those completing the program successfully. So the other two that didn't complete that program successfully were referred back to the referring agency, which were for attendance, um, so that goes back to the school and then they file for truancy. And then they go to court and then they're placed on probation for truancy. Community service hours, um, in the last year, we did two hundred and eighty-four hours, um, total in just Staples, um, with those kids, as well as forty-eight hours of volunteer hours, um, that the kids get to do and then go on, um, fun activities afterwards when they're done with those volunteer hours. Currently, I have five, um, students on for truancy, with ninety-two percent of those staying off of, um, probation. With school presentations, um, in the last year, we did approximately twenty of those, um, reaching approximately seven hundred students, so that's within, um, Todd and Wadena Counties, um, throughout the schools there. We did a total of forty activities between Todd and Wadena County. So those are incentive-based activities that we take kids on throughout the year, so that's where your guys' money helps us to do those things as well. Some different things that we, we do there on the bottom, um, for fun is biking, kayaking, tubing, swimming, um, movies, we take kids to Valley Fair, um, Twins Games, um, we brought kids to Duluth before. And then some of those community service and volunteering, um, we do city cleanups. So we did, um, this last year, we did, um, the Staples School area, we cleaned up, we did the city parks around here, um, and we do that all in Todd and Wadena County. And we also plant, um, a CCY garden, um, that kids can do some of their volunteer and community service hours as well. So this year, we had about six students that helped us in the garden, um, and we had roughly twelve hundred pounds donated to the area food shelves. We did in the last year, um, four of either school board or city council meetings like this, um, just to update, um, you guys and so you guys know where your money's going. But any questions, thoughts?
Any questions for Haley?
Nope.
Looks like you're busy.
Always. Yes, um, the schools keep us busy, um, all throughout Todd and Wadena County, so. Again, thank you guys, so. Anything else?
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for what you do.
Thanks, Haley. Alright, we'll move on to the next item, uh, to consider outdoor event requests for Vern Fest on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Hi.
Hi.
I didn't know it. So we gave last-
We want to report on what you gave last year.
Yes, oh, well. Well, obviously, we had a great time because we want to do it again. So just looking for that, uh, noise, exempt approval again for that Friday of Railroad Days, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-six. Um, we're having the same band come back, super, super great group of guys. Um, I even gave their number to lefties to try and get them at the street dance. So I don't know if that's in the works or not, but we would like to bring them back to our get-together once again.
So in, in your packet is the request form where, uh, Wadena spelled everything out on there and-
Yeah, we just have a potluck.
Catch bases with their police department. They had no issues whatsoever, so.
This is open to the public. I mean, this is a public event, right?
No, private, um, invite only.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's just a bunch of, uh, friends that we've gotten together every year during Railroad Days and-
Yeah.
They come and hang out and last year, we added the band for a, a bigger party, I guess. I don't know, just to celebrate. And, uh, yeah, we'd like to do it again because we had so much fun. Most of the neighbors, um, in the neighborhood came over or were sitting outside listening. Uh, we seen a couple of them afterwards and, oh, we could hear it and we enjoyed it. We sat out in the backyard and listened and so. We didn't have any trouble. We, we put, uh, police line, do not cross, across the yard just for a joke to, you know, one of the guests is a, a police officer, so he brought them with and just to kind of like, private only. But it was kind of fun.
Good. Do we need motion? Uh, is there any other questions we can entertain in motion for that?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mary, second by Blake. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
I abstain.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming and talking to us.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
See ya.
We'll move on to, uh, item number seven, to consider approval of resolution twenty-two thousand and one adopting electric and water rates.
So copy the resolutions in your packet. I'll let, uh, Scott talk about it, but, uh, this was also brought to the Public Works Commission with the recommendation for approval.
Yeah, uh, we did mention this last month. It's five percent, basically five percent across the board. There are some ranges and differences between residential and commercial, but, um, five percent for electric, five percent for water, five percent for sewer. These are mostly to cover, uh, budget costs. Uh, electric also is covering, um, our purchase power increases. If you take an average residential bill, it's going to be about a ten-dollar increase total for, per month. And the, uh, Public Works Commission did, um, make a recommendation for the council to pass the resolution.
And at our MRS meeting, we saw that the rates at other area power sources are, and our rates are really capable.
Yeah. Yeah, there are more that are going to see, see worse increases than five percent, for sure.
I move resolution two zero zero one.
I can settle then.
Motion by Roy, second by Mary. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Brings us to item number eight, consider approval of resolution two zero zero two, calling for public hearing on proposed assessments for non-payment of subsequent charges.
Uh, again, we're just looking to set a public hearing. This has to do with two-twenty-one Dakota, um, which is a property that we, um, used the hazardous building process on and demolished the house, so it's actually in tax forfeiture right now. But, uh, we'll move forward in the process anyway. We may have to recertify and reassess down the road. Recommend the public hearing. November twenty-third.
Second.
Motion by Blake, second by Roy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Brings us to item number nine, consider rescheduling November eleventh council meeting due to Veterans Day.
So Veterans Day is on Tuesday, the eleventh. So I, options are either to go to Monday, which some of you are deer hunters, may encroach on your Monday deer hunting activity. Wednesday.
Is there a possibility we could have a couple members come and sign bills and, and then vacate that meeting and then do it all on the twenty-fifth?
That certainly would be an option.
There's nothing that you know right now that's real pressing that we have to, to do.
Not, not that I'm aware of at this point.
Make that a motion.
So.
Motion by Roy. Second, Blake. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
And that, that does, the motion did include having a, uh, whoever's up on the rotation coming in and signing bills so we can go ahead and get those paid.
And then substitute it there.
Sure, yeah.
Well, that's the first time for me in city politics that we've done that, so that's pretty cool. Alright.
We've done it a lot of times, not when you did it.
Yeah. Alright, we'll go on to item number ten, consider approval of resolution two zero zero three approving MNO grant agreement with Minnesota Department of Transportation.
So a copy of the resolutions in your packet. This is our maintenance and operation, uh, grant agreement that we do with the state and I would, it's a two-year agreement and recommend approval of the resolution.
The second.
Motion by Blake, second by Roy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Brings item number eleven, discuss proposal from Staples Mountain School District regarding community center parking lot.
Uh, in your packet, um, is a copy of an email, um, that I received back on the sixteenth of October along with a couple aerial, aerial photos and Superintendent Tappy, uh, is here tonight just to, uh, participate in the discussion a little bit, but, um, I had approached, uh, late this summer, approached the school district about the, uh, condition of the parking lot, the community center parking lot, uh, asking for, uh, their help in, uh, restoration or improvement of the parking lot. Like, uh, Shane, you know, expressed that since they don't own it, they can't really invest, you know, their, um, maintenance dollars into it. And, um, you know, we had some additional dialogue related to that, but, um, then at a later, uh, later point, um, Shane approached me about the possibility of, of doing a land swap or a sale, um, of the parking lot to the school district and they would take over, um, the, uh, deferred maintenance of that, redo it, um, make improvements to it, obviously. Going back, you know, I guess to seventy-two or somewhere back in there, um, that was school district property that was only for the city, for the community center to be constructed on. And, um, I think, uh, you know, for the most part, has been used as, you know, by the school district for parking of the school. City also has utilized it, you know, there was a lot of, uh, back and forth there, but it's been a number of years since we switched our, um, entrance around to the Fourth Street side of the building, so, you know, at this time, uh, I would say two to three vehicles on a regular basis on the west side of the community center and then, you know, that ramp that goes back to the overhead door on the, on the gymnasium side. I think it obviously is the intention of the school that that would remain a parking lot. It would be available, uh, for us to use if we move forward with this. Like I say, we don't, we have a few events, we've got elections, we've got, um, uh, bike rodeo, DNR training, you know, things like that, um, that, um, you know, currently we'll communicate with the school that we've got those events coming up and, you know, they'll advise people not to park there. It, uh, it may be a little more complicated now with the mess, but it would, it would work, so. I wanted to indicate, Shane, I would bring it forward to the council to, um, talk about, uh, their proposal. The, the proposal that we've received does include, you know, basically a swap, a couple pieces of property, one being the old south side tennis courts on the, uh, down on, uh, Dakota and Pine Grove Road, as well as, maybe pull it up here. As well as a smaller piece that's adjacent to, I gotta share my screen. That's adjacent to property that the, uh, city already owns. First and, uh, Pine Grove Road, First Street Southwest. So there, you know, this, I think everybody is pretty familiar with the layout west of the community center. Illustrates the, uh, the condition of the, uh, of the parking lot, even with that aerial photo, but, um, down on the south side, we've got school district property here and also over here that, um, the school is proposing to swap for the, uh, portion of the parcel that the parking lot sits on at the community center. And, you know, not looking for action, I just want to have some discussion, you know, see where the, where the council, um, you know, is at, you know, just from, uh, the initial reaction standpoint and, um, obviously, parking is, you know, at a premium in that, uh, in that area. I mean, and there's any activity, um, whether that activity is occurring at the community center or at the high school, so.
So what could we use that property for?
Parking.
For what?
Or for the over there, you mean?
Yeah, on the south side.
No. That, that basically would be resident, solid residential zone.
So we could sell it.
I think, um, in, in the, the email that we got, I think that was kind of one of the, you know, one of the arguments, get it, you know, ultimately into private ownership and, um, have it developed, get it on the tax rolls. You know, I've talked, I think I've shared, you know, a few times over the years, just, you know, the, uh, you know, the idea of trying to eliminate duplicate roadway down there and, and have a, you know, a little bit more of a sweeping first street that would go over and align with Pine Grove Road, get rid of three hundred and fifty feet of road that serves no purpose, but, you know, wouldn't necessarily have immediate plans to do that, but you could actually vacate the, that portion of the road and combine all those parcels, create even more real estate to work with.
That makes those parcels a lot more, uh, attractive, I think, if you were to do something like that, I think. You know, as far as that property.
Yeah, I mean, it becomes a fairly good-sized chunk of contiguous property with sewer and water on two edges of it.
Sewer and water where?
On First Street Southwest and on Dakota.
Yeah, nothing stubbed into there?
No, but at least not that I'm aware of. I don't, uh, we don't have any record that there's-
Never been a house there, ever, that I can remember.
Yeah, and I, I don't know what, if anything, has ever been between Pine Grove Road and First Street Southwest, if there was any, you know, any development on that, but not that I ever recall.
Well, I, I hate to say it, but I am absolutely opposed to that and here's the reason why. That's the only land that is connected to our community center that if, if ever, and can't think in the moment, you've got to think thirty, forty years down the road. But that's the only land that you could use to expand our community center if it was, if, if it needed to be or turned into something other than what it is now. It makes our community center virtually unsalable, which it's been talked about a few times down in the past about selling it. It makes it virtually unsalable because there's no parking. I don't believe we, we would be in compliance with the zoning code for off-street parking, number of parking spots. I realize it's shared, but in the past, there's been times where agreements have been made, but, uh, time has a way of wearing away the agreements and what was, and what was agreed upon and, and, and paperwork gets misplaced or gone or, it just, it, it doesn't make any sense to me. It's like having a house and selling your driveway and garage. It, it makes no sense. I, I mean, I would think there's a, something that we can do to eliminate the issue of, uh, you know, I mean, um, I'm talking like, uh, leasing it to the school. So it would be, um, or something like that along those lines or, but as far as selling that, that property, um, it, it really hamstrings the city for future and, um, I, I just, I don't see the, I-
What's the cost to repair that, to redo that, uh, parking lot?
Well, it, it depends on what you're gonna do. You know, you probably could try patching and paving over it. It'll be back to this condition, you know,
The most ideal-
Short period of time. If you were gonna do a, a raised median, um, to kind of define the parking lot area, do a raised median, median on the north side of Fourth Avenue and then regrade everything, putting catch basins in there, uh, that's where that, you know, up to a hundred and seventy thousand comes in. You know, and, you know, like, like I've stated before, I have a tough time pulling the trigger on, you know, a hundred and thirty or a hundred and seventy thousand of improvements to a parking lot that we don't use, so. But that being said, there's a lot of people that utilize that area of the community and, and it's embarrassing, the condition of the parking lot, so.
I'm gonna have to agree with Doug on this one. I don't see the, the benefit of getting out of, getting losing this parking lot. Just in comparison with the land on the south side between Pine Grove and First Avenue and Dakota, do this, I, it's not a comparison in value, in my opinion. And if we're, we're currently in the process of spending a worth of a million dollars of improvements towards our community center, in the event that we have a lot more involvement with our community center and we have no parking for our community center, then what's the point of even doing any of that stuff? So, I guess I, I don't see why, why we would want to get rid of this parking lot. Yeah, if we were gonna invest in our community center.
How long ago has it been since that parking lot was overlaid?
I don't remember. I, I don't know.
I mean, it, you know,
That's a potholes in it probably every year.
Yeah, but if you don't maintain it, it won't, it, it don't last. I mean, there's costs that come with everything. It's like the roof on the community center, you know, or, or anything else, but I, I just, I see the, giving up the parking lot behind there is just, I mean, I don't know. It's, just doesn't make any sense to me, period, at all. I mean, it, it, it absolutely locks that building into being what it is until it's leveled, until it's torn down. It, there's no place to expand. Once we let it go, it'll never come back. I mean, basically, the school, I mean, I remember when that was, uh, I think probably where that green car is there was home plate. I remember that, you know, it was a baseball field. But it's, it, um, I don't know, it, I, you know, it's, it's not about anything other than, to me, what makes sense and it doesn't make any sense to sell that parking lot and give that up. Um, I'd happy, I'd like to cooperate with the school, um, in, in a way that, you know, gets utilized, but I think the city needs to maintain control of that property to maintain, um, what, what might be the future of our community center and what, what might eventually happen there. Who knows, you know? Thirty, forty years, twenty years, whatever it might be. I mean, when you, if, once they let it go, it'll never come back and never get it back.
What do you think an overlay would cost over that parking lot if we did not do the, huh?
Hundred and seventy.
No, no.
No, yeah.
Just to overlay.
Yeah, if you were gonna overlay, you know, probably thirty, forty. Would be it, if you're gonna, you know, go right over the top of everything that's there.
Right.
But, um, that, you know, ultimately isn't the long-term fix, but-
No, right.
It's a bad idea.
Right.
I think in our feasibility study, uh, that we did a few years ago, we had a thirty-five-thousand dollar number in that.
So what about off-street parking that we require for other, uh, businesses and stuff that, uh, what about the off-street parking that we require for that, that, um, you know, I mean, I remember when they built that, uh, beauty shop down there on, uh, Fourth Street, they had to put a curb cut in and have four parking spots for that beauty shop off-street. You know, we, don't we have the same requirements for the city or?
Um, I would say based on- Um, I, I would say based on our current utilization, there would be no increased demand on, you know, for off-street parking. And I'm, I, I would have to look at.
What's based on square footage of the building?
Requirement is, you know, and, and the utilization. But it, um, like, like I say, we're not, um, yeah, we're, we're not proposing not to be able to ever utilize the parking lot.
I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm saying that.
Talked about some kind of easement or, or, you know, use agreement or something of that nature. Um, but we don't wanna get too far into the weeds on any of that until we have an idea of what the reaction of the council is, so.
Well, I know, no matter what we have to do to that parking lot.
Well, it's not even that bad. Mary, I was just in it the other day and it was not, there's no big potholes in it or nothing like that. It's not.
I would disagree with you on that, but.
Well, I just drove through it, Ron.
Pretty bad shit.
It's not. I mean, there's a lot of things around this town that could use a lot more attention than that, tell you that right now, but.
In my opinion, it's not, it's not an issue to me that the school utilizes that parking lot throughout this year. And I, I don't see the issue in that right now. What I see the issue is it's losing that property and no longer having full control of that property. Could we have done better on maintaining that parking lot? The answer is a hundred percent yes. However, that I, that I see the school, would it be beneficial if they could help pay for it? Absolutely be beneficial. But just the concept of losing the property doesn't sit well.
I mean, have we ever in, in, you know, looked into doing a lease agreement? That, um, a school leases it from the city and, I mean, I don't know. Guy got fifty bucks a day or for the, for a lease, uh, you know, I mean, we could afford to, we could afford to, um, fix it up. You know, whatever, some kind of lease agreement that we didn't lose control of property anyway. It's not, you know, the immediate need for the parking lot back there, maybe, you know, probably not. It's been utilized more by the school probably than, I, I know there was a time, I think when Nate Matthews was here, that he, that I don't know if it was the principal or the superintendent, I think it was superintendent, somebody made a decision that the school wouldn't, couldn't, you couldn't park in there. The school didn't get to use it and, and it sat there and was empty all day long for a good long time. Well, that admit, well, I, I guess I, I probably didn't work on the police department knowing that, but, but, um, it's true and that, that did happen. And, um, they wanted to park down on the north end of the building, the kids. They, they basically wanted one entrance into the school for safety concerns, rather than have an entrance through the cafeteria and all over. The doors were locked and it was a, it was a for active shooters things and all the things that go on at schools, you know? And so we didn't have people parking in the parking lot for a good long time there.
Just out of curiosity with that parking lot during this year, obviously I know what, who was parking in there in the evenings for sporting events. Obviously it's fans, parents and so on and so forth, but just a question for you, Shane. During the day, school day, do you know if it's more so students that are utilizing these parking lots, staff?
Very cool. Yeah, it's, I mean, mixture of both, yeah. I, I'm not gonna say that it's not students, it's both staff and students.
And as the mess gets bigger, I would imagine that they would like to have a few more spots along there to the people.
I mean, in a perfect world, if we could split that lot, you know, and you, and help maintain it and everything, but it's just not realistic with your limitation with your funds if you don't own it.
Right, yeah, we, we can't use taxpayer dollars to pay for a city-owned parking lot. That's not, uh, that's not being used towards the school district taxpayer dollars. And a lease agreement doesn't fix that, you own property. I mean, a lease agreement doesn't allow us to do that either. We can't, we can't repair a property that is ours.
So you couldn't even be in a lease agreement then? You couldn't be in a lease agreement or rental agreement or something?
I don't know what the value of a lease agreement would be if you own the property. You wouldn't be able to be physically responsible for that. You can't use the money dollars to address, a lease agreement is irrelevant.
Well, if we were getting, if we were getting revenue, if it, you know, just I'd, I'd just throw out the number, fifty bucks a day. We did the, if we, if we, uh, got a, had a lease agreement for that and, uh, we, the city could, you know, if we're getting the revenue for it, we could fix the parking lot. Um, and, and the lease, the money we got from lease agreement plus tax dollars, we would, we'd be able to pay for that. Improvements in there and we still maintain control of the property. That, that's the thing, you know, I mean, you don't know what's gonna happen in twenty years and, or thirty years, you know, and, uh, I'd hate to be go down in history. I mean, I've seen things that where decisions were made about selling property or selling equipment or any of this stuff and two years later you need it and no way to get it back. It's gone. And, and I just, I, I don't see the, the value of it. They can use the parking lot. It's not a total disaster in there. It isn't. And by a lot of standards, I mean, we've got worse streets in town than that parking lot is, and they don't get overlaid. I can show you a few right over my area, so.
I just think, go back to, I mean, this is just my opinion, but go back to my original statement. I mean, you take the school out of the picture, completely take the school out of the picture and you look at the community center. We agreed over many years ago that we were gonna invest into our community center and stick dollars into it. So why go through the process of spending a million dollars upgrading our community center to hopefully gain and grow that community center just to lose our parking lot? Thinking of it as a, you know, city-only perspective.
You're saying the, the ownership under this proposal would change, but the use would not?
Today.
Today.
Time has a, time has a, has a, has, has a.
I mean, in seventy-two, when the school gave it to the city, they probably never thought they'd be asking for it back.
Well, but, you know, I, I guess two wrongs don't make a right.
Yeah, I don't, it, you know, and we're, we're, the conversations that, uh, Shane and I have had are just basically trying to figure out, okay, how do we fix this up and do it right?
That's all I'll study.
Controlled access is something that's important there, is there's more traffic.
We can't lose our tax dollars to fix the parking lot as part of the community center.
Oh, we could.
Oh, we could.
All right. Here's, here's my, here's my, here's, here's. Here's my old-fashioned. If I'm gonna sell something, I want it to be nice for the next person to own, that they don't have to fix everything in the book. And so, let's fix the parking lot, let her, let them use it, just fix the parking lot. I gotta say, I, I just old-fashioned. This, just, uh, I just don't like to give a piece of junk to somebody. That's not junk, excuse me.
So under your scenario, we fix it, keep it and don't use it or let them use it?
We use it in school.
Use it, use for all the events we got, all the city events and stuff. What do we do? The school can use it?
Yeah, obviously.
I mean, it's, it's the.
Years ago. That's what it boils down to.
But what, what, what has, what has changed? What has changed? What's the change? I mean, the school's been using this for, forever, since I've been here. I mean, I've gone to basketball games, couldn't find a place to park, except for parking at community center, parking lot.
So it seems, it seems like it's a consensus of this group. We have a couple council members that are here, but it seems like it's a consensus that we would not be interested in moving forward with, uh, with the sale.
But I would, I, I think we need to put it in the budget to, so, fix it. That's my opinion. Well, it's, here, here's the way it is. And I, they, it's never, I mean, it, it has some ponding issues or puddle issues. It's not, it's not a lake. It used to be, I mean, there was, it must've got resurfaced within the last ten years or something in there. Had to. Because there used to be, you know, but, but regardless, we, you know, we can have, uh, um, well, we could have our own street department, dig in that sewer, storm sewer, put them boxes in in the storm sewer. They got a backhoe, don't they? I think, don't they Scott? Have a backhoe down there?
I got one that can dig in, uh, storm sewer.
Right, so we got people that are working for the city that could dig that in or whatever, one, one or two boxes in a, in the piping. And, um, we got grading equipment. We must have a transit, don't we? To read level heights.
Yeah, I would imagine we do.
I mean, we can do that too.
Guys are, uh, proficient, uh, road builders.
Well, they're not, but I'm not either, but I worked in the business for about eighteen years.
I just, uh, I don't wanna play the game of whatevs, but just looking at the current proposal, if we keep the land and let's just say, what if our row will want to expand our community center? Great, if the land's still in our name, or if we sell it and the school says they wanna utilize it as a parking lot now. But what if five years from now they want a third gymnasium or they wanna make their auditorium bigger and lose that parking lot in general? So I see your point, Gerald, that, you know, the use is still there as it being a parking lot. You have some type of agreement or easement process or whatever the case may be. But if you wanted to play the what-if game, whoever gets the land has the opportunity to do whatever they want with it.
All right, I don't, I don't know if there's anything more we need to discuss. I think we'll move on. Move on to committee reports. Uh, Park and Recreation Advisory Board.
Uh, Park and Rec, uh, met October, uh, fourteenth. Basically a bunch of updates on, uh, uh, various projects that are going on. Boiler and hot water, uh, project was complete. Uh, that's all operating well. Uh, Department of Ed Grant, um, we've got, uh, I think at our last meeting, we approved the grant agreement. Uh, got that sent back to, um, to them. Um, crew is out at, uh, out at Pine Grove, got the, uh, membrane on the roof out there. It doesn't appear there's been any other activities since. It's a matter of putting in the air vents and, um, doors um, and pouring sidewalks, a little bit of site work yet at this point. Um, got the, uh, Arts and Crafts, uh, Fair coming up on the fifteenth of November. And, um, did, uh, move forward with canceling the, um, meeting in November, um, due to Veterans Day and other things that are going on, so relatively quick meeting. Got done at five twenty-one.
Any questions for Gerald? Not, we'll move to open forum. You can come to the frontier and just identify yourself and.
I hate being in front of people, but, um, so I'm Carla Leahy, my husband Dale. And I just want a real la- letter. I know a few of you guys, but. So, this is Dale and I's story. Dale and I were planning for our retirement. After much deliberation, we decided we would sell our house, buy some lots and build a shouse. We did the right thing. We paid our debts. We used debt solution to help us pay off what we owed. We knew our new home would be paid for and there would be no mortgage. We would, we were told by Staples that we could build anything we wanted if it did not look like a garage. In July, we sold our current home for less than we really wanted, but knowing we still had enough money to pay off any debt and build our new home, we accepted the offer. However, once the process began, Luke blocked us on every step. Each step we would unblock would cost us money and it was not a little money, it was a lot of money. The first block, he would not grant us a permit. He said Dale's plans for the design of the shouse was not good enough and forced us to go elsewhere to have the same plans drawn up. This cost us an additional twelve hundred dollars. In the meantime, the weather was getting colder. We were sleeping in a tent camper. We haven't even gotten our dirt dug, so we could begin putting footings in and build our home. It needed to be completed before winter arrived. We were homeless. We still are. The next block, Luke stated that he would not grant permit until we got a professional structural engineering drawing of the slab. No information was given to us on where we could go to get this. We told him, no, we would not do this. What would this cost us and what would he ask for next? We were running out of time. We tried to buy a house. We had eighty percent of the money and we'd need a loan for the rest. But because we used national debt relief, no bank would give us a loan. We are still homeless. Most of you probably have no idea how this feels. It is isolating, brings feelings of instability, fear and anger. Would you want to be homeless and homeless in the winter? I tell everyone how Luke treated us and I will never spend a dime, as far as I can, in Staples because of the way Luke Hanson treated us. And, um, my son got involved. He even called Luke and Scott Siduski, I think is his name. And they just basically laughed. And when I told Luke that we were homeless because of him, he just laughed. I don't know Luke personally. I don't, if I seen him on the street, I wouldn't know who he is. And I just have to be forgiving, but I want the city of Staples to know that we, I'm a home care nurse. And I take care of a lot of people and I've dealt with homeless people and I don't.
Look like a homeless person?
But, um, so because we couldn't buy a place, we bought a Class A motorhome, which we lived in up until about four days ago. Winter in Minnesota, you cannot live in a Class A. So, um, we had to take some more of our money and rent a place, which we never wanted to rent either. We wanted to live in Staples because it was closer to my work, our work, closer to our church and close to our children. But now, I don't know as if I'll ever own any property ever again, so thanks for your time.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Thank you for sharing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Open forum. Not, we'll move on to City Administrator's Report.
Uh, just a couple, uh, different items. One, the locker room project. We had a pre-construction meeting on that. Um, with lead times of lockers probably talking, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, early to mid-January start. And, um, approximately about a three-month-long project duration on that, so. Um, duration's probably a little bit shorter. Would've been nice to start earlier, but doesn't do any good to have a locker room ready to go that doesn't have lockers in it, so.
Duration's probably a little bit shorter. Would've been nice to start earlier, but doesn't do any good to have a locker room ready to go that doesn't have lockers in it, so. Didn't realize that would be, um, as long of a lead time, but those that are in the know are not surprised by that. Um, I think, uh, Park and Rec report, you know, all the parks and everything closed, um, beginning of October, so it's, uh, buttoned up and I think all the water's blown out and, and, uh, should be winterized for the year. Um, paving, uh, project out at the airport, uh, the area of concern was redone. Um, go out after the rain today to see how, see how that looks and, um, trying to get as many of those projects buttoned up here before winter as possible, so. That's all I have, unless there's questions.
What's that? Where you turn?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor will sign if everybody's saying aye.
Aye.